Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting tonight, Thursday, September 1st, 2022. I ask that I call ourselves to order that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. I have one, I would say would be a change in the agenda if it's okay with everyone. We'd like to move up Attorney Slater. To literally to what point, Andy, would you like to move him up to?
Yeah, so that will be the agenda, item 8C, the cannabis. And because the town attorney is with us here tonight, I'd like to move that right up under item five.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any issues with that change? Hearing none. Okay. Is there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. Our next section would be our public comment section. Do we have anyone for public comment? Okay, hearing none. We will move up to actually, if we have no one for the good to know special recognition, is that true, Andy?
Yeah, we don't have anything for this Selectmen's meeting.
Okay, so then we'll go right into item 8C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you'll see referendum questions on cannabis regulations or prohibitions in the town of Hebron and to set a public hearing in the meeting day. So we have Attorney Ken Slater here with us, the town attorney, to go over the process. Originally, the Board of Selectmen had asked that we put advisory question, questions on the ballot at referendum. But then in further searching through there, the issue that that would be a binding. If we were to put those questions on, then the results would be binding. So I wouldn't recommend, I don't think that was in the flavor of what the Selectmen were looking to do. So we listed out a couple of options on the documentation you have here, and then I'll let Ken speak a little bit more to it. Like I said, I think the direction I had from the Board of Selectmen at the time was to put advisory questions on, not knowing the results of that would be binding by the vote. So therefore, the original request was from the Planning and Zoning Commission on guidance from the Board of Selectmen on how to write or move forward with regulations, either prohibiting or allowing cannabis. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, and if you have any questions, Mr. Slater is here to help.
Okay. Looking over everything. Excuse me. It does seem as if the cleanest would be to make, you know, and I actually wrote up a couple of motions that we could make, that we could open it up for discussion. But I think it's important for people to understand, or for Attorney Slater, just clarify, even if an ordinance is made, A, it could be overturned. That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay. If the Planning and Zoning Commission does or writes up regulations, then that would go to a special town meeting where the public could then put their input in and planning and zoning could then take that information and either amend or cancel or whatever their regulations. Is that true?
Yes. If I could, Mr. Chair, could I give a very brief overview of what the options are?
Please, yes.
Okay, the cannabis legislation, what it did is it gave the authority for planning and zoning commissions to regulate. There's a series of different kinds of cannabis facilities, which include, and by the way, this does not deal at all with medical cannabis facilities. That's an entirely different thing. This is the recreational and cultivation of essentially the business of cannabis for recreational use. And they, the statute defines a few different kinds of facilities, and it gives zoning commissions the ability to regulate. And regulate includes prohibit. So the zoning commission could, if it wished to, you know, prohibit it in, under the zoning regulations. That's not something that could be overridden by anyone. Only the zoning commission has that authority, the zone. And it wouldn't be a special town meeting. It would be, there'd be a public hearing, like other zoning regulations, if they wish to adopt the regulation that would prohibit, or one that would allow, but regulate where it's located, or regulate particular kinds of facilities. However, it wished to deal with cannabis, that would be the subject of a public hearing. They could take all the comments of the public under advisement, and then they would have, or it would, as a board, would have the authority to adopt regulations in that fashion, to prohibit or allow with limitations. The other alternative that's granted under the act that allows for the recreational cannabis, both the growth and sale, is the legislative body of the town could opt to prohibit it outright. The legislative body doesn't have the ability to regulate it, but it could prohibit one or more of the kinds of facilities that are allowed. And the statute also provides for a petition process, although frankly, the charter in Hebron has a similar petition process where, is if if your board adopted, because you have the authority under the charter to adopt an ordinance without a without sending it to referendum or out sending it to town meeting. If you sent it to a town, if you adopted it on your own, a petition can get filed to allow it. So that still wouldn't affect the ability of the zoning commission to do what it wished to do. But in terms of the legislative body of the town, or in your case, because of the authority granted to you under the charter, there could be a petition to override what you decide. You also have two, another option, two other options, frankly. You could submit the question, but it would have to be an ordinance. It couldn't be an advisory question. There's case law in Connecticut that there's specific statutory authority to do advisory questions regarding the budget. And there was a period of time in which I thought that was included in the charter. And that's okay. But there's case law that says that other kinds of advisory questions unrelated to the budget are not authorized and are essentially a waste of fiscal resources that you'd be spending the time on a referendum, even though we all know if you just put it on a ballot on a November referendum, it's really not a waste of many resources. That's really what the case says, or what the Connecticut case law said. So putting an advisory question is not an option. But you could put on the, you could call a special town meeting, and then you have the authority to adjourn it to the referendum. So if you wish to, you could send it. But as, as Mr. Tierney said, Andy said, that it would be binding. So you would be putting a ordinance before, on a referendum ballot, which if it was passed, it would be an ordinance that would prohibit the, you know, cannabis facilities, or it could be, you know, or particular cannabis facilities. So the real question before you is whether or not you want to put a question before, either that you decide yourself and subject to, you know, a reversal by petition, although in talking to him, it's clearly that's not your intent. You, if you're going to put the question out at all, it would be to the, you know, the voters of the town. If you're going to send it out to the voters, it would be in the fashion of an ordinance prohibiting it. And obviously, if that failed, that's the, you know, the voter's, you know, decision to, you know, allow it. But still, the zoning commission can do what it wishes, but from the town standpoint. And I guess the last option is, is you, there's nothing that stops the board from making, you know, letting the Planning and Zoning Commission know what your view is. I mean, they could take that into account as it wishes. And if it does go ahead and with a public hearing of one sort or another, you can also take a position and have that submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It wouldn't be binding in any way, but it would be just the view of your board with respect to cannabis. So, so that's the range of options that you have. I hope that wasn't too confusing, but that that's what the statute gives you the ability to do. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that, if I gave you, you know, a lot to chew on there.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Attorney Slater?
Hi there, Dan.
Okay, I
Tiffany, how we
Okay, Tiffany, please.
Sure. So just a quick question of clarification. I think I know the answer, but I want the public to hear it. So Attorney Slater, the reason that this question would be phrased this way, you know, on the prohibition side as opposed to allowing it, is because it's already legal in the state of Connecticut, and this is the decision. So the only option we have then in terms of this legally is to present a question that would prohibit it. I just want to make sure that's clear for people that are tuning in that might be concerned about the language of the question.
That is absolutely correct. The default, both if the zoning commission does nothing, then what the statute says is that a cannabis facility must be treated as this most similar use. So if it was a growing facility, it would have sent to be treated like an agricultural use. If it was a retail sale facility, it would, it would be based on either a retail use, or if there's a special rule about package stores, possibly there. But the default, if you do nothing and the Planning and Zoning Commission does nothing, is that it is allowed. But the statute does give the ability of the municipality through its legislative body to prohibit it. And it also gives the ability of, to the zoning commission to regulate, which could include prohibiting all the way down to allowing in particular places, subject to certain restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. So you are right. Absent action by either the town or action by the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is permitted.
Thank you.
Mark?
Dan, I have a question. Yes. Attorney Slater, a couple of things. So the Selectmen have the right to prohibit the sale of marijuana in the town of Hebron, just on the body itself, voting. Is that correct?
That is correct, because under the charter, you can adopt an ordinance. So, and that's the way in which the general statute allows for the prohibition of cannabis sale in a municipality is by way of the adoption of an ordinance. So your charter gives you a couple of choices, three, actually. The choices are for you to adopt an ordinance, subject to a potential that voters can file a petition to overrule you. That's one. Second would be a town meeting in which, a special town meeting, in which a vote is had at that meeting. That's not subject to reversal, because there's the vote in which the voters speak. And then the third choice, if you wanted to go to a full referendum, you can call the special meeting, but you have a right under statute to send it to a machine vote. And if you did it in line with the November vote, you could send the question. But it would be an ordinance. It would be a proposed ordinance, and the only kind of ordinance the statute allows the town to adopt is a prohibition of one or more of the facilities allowed under the act. Whereas the regulation, the zoning commission is, has more latitude. It can adopt regulations and impose specific restrictions. But the town itself, really, it's an all or nothing proposition for any given type of facility. It could either prohibit all cannabis facilities or particular kinds, but by way of an ordinance. So if you're going to submit it and adopt it yourself, send it to a special meeting, and you could send it to a machine vote if you wish to.
All right, so the part about zoning, coming up with regulations, we're, we're just making a recommendation to them, the power of persuasion that we would want some kind of regulation, say the regulation is, we don't want any marijuana-type facility sale, agriculture, whatever, within three miles of a school. Now, they could listen to us say that, but they could do whatever they want, though?
Absolutely, that is correct.
Okay, here's another
That's true on anything that zoning might do. If you really didn't like, you know, you didn't really like a restriction on, you know, allow, having a restriction on, on, you know, certain kinds of commercial uses, you could make a recommendation to them, but it, it's the Planning and Zoning Commission has the ultimate authority to decide what to do with zoning.
Here, here's a conflict. So you can't sell drugs within 1,500 feet of a school. So what if you had a marijuana facility that was allowed by Planning and Zoning to sell marijuana in a retail facility next to Butterballs? You'd be breaking the law, and you'd get locked up because you're selling drugs within 1,500 feet of a school. So how do those things work out? Plus, it's still a federal law against it. So what would happen in that case? Because I'd have the authority to arrest you by the penal code under 21A statutes.
Well, actually, that was an excellent question, and it was raised by another town, and we dug in on it. And this is one instance, because, you know, sometimes the legislature swings and misses on some things. But in this case, under state law, it has, it's taken, it's no longer classified as the kind of illegal drug that you'd arrest them for. So, so it would be if, if the, if the zoning commission opted not to place a restriction in where I'll call loosely the drug-free zones that are in place, it's not categorized as one of the drugs that's prohibited within a drug-free zone. The federal question is a whole different thing. And the reason why it's still a drug that's not permitted under federal law, but there's a letter that was issued, and it's being followed by the Attorney General to the Assistant Attorney Generals of, or the, 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 every, every state's I said attorney, yeah, it is the Attorney General, and it's the prosecutors all across the United States, federal prosecutors. It directs them that, based on the resources of the Department of Justice, they should not use, generally use their resources to prosecute use or sale of marijuana, cannabis, if it is permitted under that state's law. So you're right, it is technically not authorized under federal law, but it's authorized under Connecticut law. So you wouldn't be able to arrest anyone under Connecticut law for that. And under federal law, there's basically a directive to the US attorneys, that's the word I was looking for before, to the various US attorneys in the state, in the United States, to not use its resources to prosecute on anything related in a state which allows the sale of these.
You know what's interesting about that, Ken, is you work on Drug and Gang Task Force, where you have federal agents that you work with. So at times, we'll use federal statutes to make arrests because they're more powerful and not as lenient when you get to court. So if I was working on a drug task force with a federal agent, he would have the right to arrest that person at the retail store?
He'd have the right to, but they've been directed by the Department of Justice not to do it. So I'm not aware of any in Colorado, Massachusetts, the various states that allow it. I'm not aware of it, although, you know, I'm not, I, there may be an exception that I'm not aware of. But because of the directive that they shouldn't use prosecutorial resources on that, yeah, I guess even if an FBI agent or, you know, or, you know, a arrested somebody, theoretically, the US attorney would, would not prosecute.
All right, and thanks, Dan. That was kind of enlightening. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Anybody else have other questions? I have one. Someone was asking, would this, if, if this ordinance or Planning and Zoning, whoever, were to put this restriction on, are people still allowed to do a certain number of plants themselves for personal use?
My understanding, although you'd be honest with you, Mr. Chair, that question hasn't been specifically asked of me. But because it's one of the things that's allowed on the statute, I would suspect the town could prohibit that as well. But I'm not certain about that. I would have to, have to get back to you, because the focus in representing towns on this question has really been with facilities and not personal growth. But I can tell you, personal use, obviously, is permitted. So if there was a facility allowed in Columbia, you know, East Hampton, Glastonbury, Hartford, et cetera, and they purchased it legally, they can come back to Hebron and, and use it, consume it. But the, so, but the question of whether they can grow their own, I don't know. My, I don't know the answer. My guess is they can. That's, and also, it's going to be pretty challenging for someone to have, you know, a police force to have probable cause unless they're growing it in the front yard. But I frankly don't know the answer to that one.
Matt, coming from Colchester, did you, or have you any insight on that from planning and zoning perspective?
You know, actually, unfortunately, I can't cite the source, but I did a fair amount of reading in advance of the meeting tonight. And I did cross that question. I feel like it was under the frequently asked questions on the state's website. And my understanding is that because it's not considered a cannabis establishment, the ability for an individual to grow at their home will not be regulated and cannot be regulated by the municipality. I believe that is going to be something that is dictated by the public act, and it's permissible going forward. So I don't think that's going to be something the, certainly the Planning and Zoning Commission will not want to engage in. But whether or not there's the potential for the board to prohibit, you know, homegrown, I would say, I think it's unlikely.
And that makes sense to me, even though I told you I didn't know the answer. It makes sense, because most of the legislation deals with facilities, and that's not a facility.
Pete, please.
I think, I think I'm clear in this, but the original, the original intent that we had as a board was to solicit additional public input, because we felt it was a broader issue that we wanted to make sure the public had a chance to weigh in on, as opposed to make a decision independent of additional input. So what I'm hearing is that the only way to, 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 in effect, get non-binding public opinion is through the option that Attorney Slater outlined, which is through planning and zoning, that they could, again, call a public hearing, get input, and solicit input from us as a board, and then bring that into consideration when they look to evaluate, you know, they want to incorporate this into the town and the town's regulations. Is that an accurate assessment of getting that non-binding public?
The only, the only other thing, but we all know the weaknesses of that, is you could have an exit poll in November, and you could have people weigh in, but that's, that's different than an actual vote or a public hearing.
So I think, so thank you very much. I think, so I just thinking that, well, we all don't necessarily agree on some of the broader issues. However, as a board, we were interested in getting additional public input. So my opinion is that, this is, first of all, thank you very much, this is very helpful, is that in order to stay on that course, it likely is in our best interest to turn it, to solicit the option, or move forward the option to turn it back to Planning and Zoning, to allow them to structure it and get that input, and allow them to hear our input, as we would any other establishment that we may be concerned about or not. Like, there's a number of retail establishments that I wouldn't want near a school, and I'm guessing that Planning and Zoning has that addressed. And you can sort of think of the examples there, which I won't highlight, but that, to me, seems to be the best course of action, to put out, in effect, a force and ordinance. I don't know if that's, was ever our intent, at least, you know, again, we might not all agree with that, but that is, there is a risk there that it goes in a direction that we all don't support. So to get the most input that we ultimately were looking for originally, it would seem that would be the course of action. So that, just, just, if, I just wanted to present that opinion. Thank you.
And I agree with that. And fortunately, that, you know, the case law, because the original question was just putting it as an advisory question, Mr. Bordeaux had prepared one, and based on this, the case that exists, and the fact that there's a lack of statutory authority to do advisory questions outside the context of the, of a budget, then, then you're right, that's, that's the only way to get something that's really not binding would be the planning, you know, making a recommendation for the Planning and Zoning to proceed with a, with a regulation, considering a regulation and having a public hearing.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Tiffany.
Just to comment, piggyback off of what Peter just said, which I agree with. I also think, too, our intent was, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we had agreed as a board as well to hold informational sessions where we could bring in people from both sides of the issue to talk to people as well. And I think that's still important to mention here, because I do think, no matter what direction we go in, it would still be helpful to do something like that for the town. Thank you.
Okay, I actually wrote up a motion.
Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt. I thought Andy had, Andy, do you have a hand up? I just want to make sure, or did I miss that? I'm looking at my phone, so I may
Just, I think you guys are probably aware of it, but if the Selectmen opt to do an ordinance, there would not be a public hearing. There wouldn't be any input. I just wanted to make sure that was known.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman. I just thought Andy might have added something prior to you delivering your motion. So, thank you.
So
Can I just jump in there? I just want to make sure it's clear. If the Selectmen propose an ordinance, before the ordinance is adopted, there has to be a public hearing also.
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, that, that's correct.
Okay. Well, what I, what I wrote was that we, the Board of Selectmen, request that the Planning and Zoning write up regulations that would prohibit the sale of cannabis in the town of Hebron. Also, that they write up a regulation which will prohibit the commercial cultivation of cannabis in the town of Hebron. That way, it would put it back into planning and zoning. They would be able to hold their hearings to find out what the flavor of the people are. I did line up speakers from, from different organizations. But again, it's just, it's, you know, trying to get everybody and everything with time. But this way, it would open it up so that Planning and Zoning could, would do the spearhead on this. They would have their, their hearings on it. What's, what do you, what's the flavor of, of the members? Yes, Matt?
If I may, just quickly, Mr. Chair. You know, the, the motion you just described, you used the word prohibit, perhaps. The direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission would be to regulate or appropriately regulate the different uses. I don't know if that was your intention to suggest that the board would request that the PCC prohibit. And, and if I could, just quickly, I just want to describe a little bit about the process that the Planning and Zoning Commission would take. Staff would spend some time with the commission to review what other communities have done. We would certainly reach out to them and try to understand how they reached the decisions that they made in terms of regulation, how they came up with the decisions they did in terms of buffering or distances from sensitive facilities, schools, churches, and such. And in advance of their consideration of that regulation that they draft, there will be a public hearing. So that, that would be step one. So that process would lead to the adoption of a regulation. Once that regulation is adopted, it is highly likely, I have a great deal of confidence, that all the uses that are listed under these cannabis establishment license types would be subject to a special permit. That means that on a case-by-case basis, as an application is made to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing is required for each one of those. So it's more than one opportunity for the public to be involved in the decision-making in terms of where a cannabis facility would be located. Just wanted to clarify a little bit.
Okay. Well, I would accept that as a I'm trying to think of the proper term, a friendly, whatever, to change the word prohibit to regulate. You know, would that work, Attorney?
It, it would. If the, if the board's mind, what, what Mr. Bordeaux was suggesting is something that it would be allowed, but the commission would have a lot of discretion to simply say no in any given facility, in any given location. But it would be an allowable use. If the board, this board was of a mind that they absolutely thought that activity should not be allowed in the town of Hebron, then, then keep the word prohibit. It still would be up to the, the commission. But if you want to give, recommend But if you want to give, recommend to them that they adopt the regulation to manage it, because if they do nothing, then they can come in and somebody can file an application as a retail use in, in, in the center of town and they would really couldn't, you know, it'd be very difficult to deny it. So there is a difference, although a zoning commission, the word regulate for a zoning commission includes the right to prohibit. I think if you use the word regulate, you'd be sending the message to them to allow it, but impose limitations upon it. Whereas if the board was of the mind that no way, no how should cannabis sale or cannabis growth should be allowed in town, then that's the way it should be. That's the language it should be used. So your initial language suggests a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission that they prohibit it and not allow it under any circumstances. If that's your view, your motion should stand. If your view is to advise them that they shouldn't just let it be and let it be allowed without regulation, you would be advising the Planning and Zoning Commission to take action and adopt some kind of regulation that would limit and, and manage the way these facilities could be approved, if at all.
Okay. Yes, Peter, please.
If, if that's, if, if we left prohibit, I actually, I appreciate Matt's explanation. And I, and I, the more I've thought about this over time, because we've talked quite a bit about it, is, you know, the expertise of the Planning and Zoning Commission should not be minimized. So this is what they do. And, and so I, I actually am a fan of regulation as opposed to prohibiting it. Because if we're going to prohibit, tell them to prohibit it, then effectively we should just create an ordinance and keep them out of it. Because I mean, they prohibit it and couldn't we just do that by ordinance? And then if the town doesn't like it, they can, I guess they can petition. But I think we should lean towards the expertise of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then that allows, again, the non-binding public opinions. And as Matt was describing, we have opportunities to continue to weigh in on a case-by-case basis. And let's not lose sight because it's a broad issue that everyone's interested in. The likelihood of there being a line of entities trying to open up marijuana establishments in Hebron is zero. I mean, the line may be one, you know, whatever, but it's not like there's going to be 30, you know, entities trying to find, you know, grow establishments. Yeah, that's been outlined in the documents and you look at where we are, we're next to a highway, all these other things that are relevant. So I think it'd be few and far between. But the expertise of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, would adequately protect the town and give us an opportunity to get the opinion of the public and still provide our opinion separately. So if, as a board, we want to put forward our bias a certain way, we clearly have the opportunity to do that as well, to potentially give them the input, at least from our perspective. So I appreciate that perspective and I think regulate is likely a better word in the spirit of giving planning and zoning an opportunity to, to do their job.
Okay, my only, my only feeling on that is they would still have the right to not follow our request. You know, it is a request. I just, I, I, I am personally against it here in town. I know Willimantic has got it, Glastonbury has got it, you know, but these are towns with full-time police forces. As it was Norwich, one of their establishments was robbed a month ago. I, I just think it's potentially creating more issues here in Hebron than it's going to solve. That's my, my own viewpoint. I don't know what others think. You know, Mark or Gail? Gail?
Dan?
Yes.
So like, like you, I'm against it in Hebron. I'm not a, for criminalizing marijuana, going back to punishing people who use marijuana. But it reminds me of when vaping first came out. It was going to be so great. People weren't going to get addicted. There wasn't as much nicotine in it. All these great things that people said about vaping and how it was going to help with smoking, it made things worse. And it also created an industry where certain individuals buy vapes and sell them to young people. And this happens right in Hebron. It happens everywhere. And they also make deliveries of it. So why would I think after 40 years of watching and trying to be involved in preventing drug use, arresting drug users and society still struggling with this? Why would I think that that wouldn't happen with drugs? And we create an industry where certain opportunists would buy the marijuana and sell it to kids right down the street, have a delivery service where they have online, they do this with vaping, they do it with drugs too. This, this is a great concern to me. Maybe I'm polling the wrong people, but I don't know any high school parents or teachers who are in favor of having retail drug outlets in Hebron. And, and that's just the way I feel and the people that I represent and that I've talked to feel.
Andy, please.
Yeah, just for point of order, we kind of have a motion out there. I don't know if anybody acted on that motion before. I knew you want discussion, but I don't know if that was formalized or not. That motion.
No, I, I've read it. It's still, it's still on the floor.
I'm not sure it's clear. At least it isn't to me.
Okay.
The motion, if I could jump in, it, it seemed as though, Mr. Chair, that you were leaning towards Matt's friendly amendment to use the word regulate. So it wasn't, it's not clear whether or not you adopted your motion to include regulate as opposed to prohibit. And, and then I don't think there was a second, although it's not essential to have one. Usually you got folks to do seconds.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, Gail, did you want to weigh in?
I don't like the idea of having an establishment here in town. Coming from a big city and working with the population that I had worked with, I know the dangers of marijuana. So I would prefer not to see it one here in town. As far as your motion goes, before I could vote on it, I'd need to hear it all over again. But I would go along with Matt's change of word to regulate.
Tiffany?
Yeah, I, I would go along with, with Matt's friendly amendment to regulate. I think to Peter's excellent point, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission has a lot of expertise in this area. And I think that is a way that we can solicit input from people, you know, from people in town on how they feel about this. So I would support the motion if the word regulate was put in place to prohibit.
Okay, question again to the attorney and Matt. If through the public hearing process, it was determined that this was not going to be a good fit for Hebron, they could still then prohibit it through planning and zoning? Is that correct?
That is correct. If a regulation was proposed that would regu, allow it, but regulate it, and the public came out and was from, you know, very, very vehemently opposed to it, then the commission could not adopt that. And then they'd have to propose another regulation, which would be a regulation to prohibit. And that would be a new public hearing. Presumably if that was the sediment of the public, they would come out in favor of the, the regulation to prohibit it and that would get adopted. So my expectation with a, with the, yeah, support of the change of the word to regulate, that the commission, although they have an independent mind, that they would probably propose a regulation along the lines that Matt suggested that allows it only by special permit so that they could have discretion from location to location. And if the public came out very strongly against even that, then, you know, they might take that into account and choose not to adopt that kind of a regulation, but it really would be within their, their discretion.
Okay, so I will try this again. I move, make a motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, request that the Planning and Zoning Commission write up regulations that will regulate the sale of cannabis in the town of Hebron. Also that they write up regulations which would regulate the commercial cultivation of cannabis in the town of Hebron. Any questions? Okay, hearing no other questions. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Myself, Dan Larson. I'm going to go nay, even though it was my motion. I really feel that we don't need it in Hebron. But. So we have handed this to you, Matt.
Can I take back my aye? Can you do that?
I can. And this is why we.
I want to go nay also. My conscience won't allow me to do that. I want to go nay. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
I. Chairman, you, you haven't called it yet. I, I think that if a member of the commission who's made a motion or has made a vote, but before you've, you've declared the result has changed their vote, I think that's, that, that's permissible.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, so it's three, four, two against. The motion does carry. So Matt, have fun with it. He's smiling at me, but God knows what he's saying under his breath. Thank you, Attorney Slater.
My pleasure and I wish you all a very good night and a great, long holiday weekend.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay. Moving back, I guess our, our next then would be our appointments and resignations.
Yes.
Andy?
Yep, yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, next is item six, appointments and resignations is the animal control officer appointment. So Willie Bell is stepping down as animal control officer for the town of Hebron after almost 25 years of serving in that position. Jason Hunterford, a Longtime Parks and Recreation Department employee, has expect, interest in serving as the animal control officer. Drafted up a one-year agreement. So I'm looking for the Board of Selectmen to confirm my appointment. So just a little bit broader stroke, we're still trying to regionalize this position with Columbia, but because Willie wanted to step down, the steps that would need to be taken are going to take longer than what Willie was hoping or willing to hang in there for. I think, given it one year, and Jay knows this, we're going to come back and revisit it. And maybe by that time, we can have the kinks worked out with the regionalization. So I'm proposing this for one year.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen confirm the town manager's appointment of Jason Hunterford as the animal control officer for the town of Hebron for a one-year term effective September 1st, 2022. Any discussion?
I have a question. I guess Andy, you would answer this.
Okay, Gail.
Is, he's a Parks and Rec employee now. He's full-time there?
Yes.
And this position, how do these two work together, these two positions?
Willie, Willie, Willie Bell was also a full-time town employee as well.
Yes, I know.
So it's kind of a convenience because of the vehicle situation. He has a vehicle allotted to him from Parks and Rec. 90% of the work is supposed to be conducted outside of his regular workday, but there will be, there will be instances where in emergency situations, he would have to leave his position and actually act as the ACO.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Peter?
Andy, I was just curious, what, is there training involved or is someone willing to do the job? I mean, I, I get sort of the concept of coyotes running down the middle of the street or, 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 you know, a dog's loose. I mean, but I don't even know what's involved. I just was curious. Could you provide a quick, you know, just one hour a week? Is this 20 hours a week? I mean, what's involved?
No, the state has requirements to be a certified ACO. And Jason, in part of the agreement that was drawn up, he has agreed to fulfill those obligations. They're in the midst of changing it, but right now, I believe due to COVID and everything else, he has to take like six hours of training to actually become a certified ACO. But then there's going to be quite a bit more training. I think Donna probably knows the hours, it's like 30 or four, 40 or 80 hours after a certain amount of time, but he, he will be certified and trained by the state. And Willie's, Willie's still going to be around to show him the ropes as well.
So typically what is, I don't know how many instances we have where we need that in a course of a week. I, I just don't know. I was just curious. You have sort of a feel for that? And if you don't, it's not critical for me supporting it. I just was interested.
Yeah, Willie, it depends. Like today, we had a call today. We had one call today, two roaming dogs, Animal Colchester, so Jay had to go handle that. We don't have a lot and it comes in spurts. I don't actually have the demographics for like a year at a glance. I'm sure there's some areas or times of the month or the year that are busier than others. But Willie, Willie pretty much handled it pretty, pretty good for as long as he did it. And, and I've talked to the Parks and Rec director, made sure that we weren't going to, you know, upset his operations too much. But it's kind of, for one year, it's, it's kind of a benefit for the town of Hebron because we were in a pinch with Willie stepping down and Jay willing to do it. It's kind of a, working, you know, for both, both entities working until we can possibly regionalize with somebody else.
And this is Donna here. I can comment on the training requirements. So he, Jay Hunterford will need to complete six hours of training by the end of the calendar year. And a lot of that can be done on, on line classes. And then the certification, he needs to complete an 80 hours of the ACO certification within one year of his appointment. And we've provided him with all that information. And one thing that is still ongoing is that the issue that we had on Porter Road, we still have in our dog pound several dogs. And that is something the animal control officer will, it will be continuing to deal with. So that is taking up some time in addition to the regular duties.
How many, Donna?
How many in Hebron?
No, no. From that Porter, from that awful incident. This is from that incident where all those dogs had to be rescued and animals had to be rescued? You referenced that. Okay, I was just curious. I know there was a huge number of animals that needed to be rescued. How many do we still have oversight over?
Well, let me jump in there. We have like five in our pound because that's about all we can handle. But we do have other animals in other towns that are still taking care of the animals that were taken from that house in Hebron that we still are financially on the hook for. So we're working with the state on a daily, weekly basis. But the care of those dogs, Jay goes down there before work and after work on that. Then we have some volunteers, but it is a nuisance for finance and a lot of paperwork, a lot of invoicing, and then we try to get reimbursement from the state, which we haven't gotten some. But we have four, I believe Jay just piped in. We have four dogs in the pound as we speak. But there's multiple dogs in other pounds that we're still responsible for.
Thank you. I didn't mean to distract the motion. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Anybody else? All I can say is, is that, you know, the fact that he is already a town employee and, and being in, in similar types of shoes is a plus. Whereas if he were working for another company. that other company may not be as keen to let him go and handle a situation here in Hebron. The fact that he's already here in Hebron, it gives that individual, whether it's, you know, Jason or any other employee, they've got a little bit better of a feel for what A is going on in town. Also, it does make it a little bit easier for them to be able to do these other jobs. So I am all in favor of this. I think it's a great step, a great position, and I think it only will benefit the town by having a current town employee serving in this part-time position. So that's just my two cents. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Gail?
Gail Wismann, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate that.
Our next would be the town manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So right off the bat, we have the Hebron Fair rapidly approaching, so we've been doing logistics and safety meetings and getting everything prepared for that. So we wish them well at their fair, and hopefully have good weather, and that'll give them good numbers. So we continue to work as it comes closer each day. So that takes up some time this time of year. As everybody should know, the kids are back to school and the buses are running. I was pleasantly surprised to receive a note from the Hebron Elementary School Superintendent, saying that the first day of school went smooth, and he appreciates the efforts of the Hebron Police Department and the extra police we put on for opening day to help with the traffic. So greatly appreciated. Thank you. Still working with the Public Building Committee on a public informational meeting, which is gonna be on the nineteenth, the Douglas Library, be part of the building committee's regular meeting. So their meeting will start at six-thirty, and they will have at seven o'clock on their agenda a public informational meeting to give an update on the recent studies that were finally completed. And I think when they're done doing that, they will make a recommendation, send a letter to the Board of Selectmen to actually move that project forward to final design and final cost. That's the nineteenth, and everybody's invited. We sent out invitations today. There'll be an article in the River East tomorrow, and then we're gonna start doing some social media blasts to let the people know. Danny, as you well know, I've been working with Father Ron and his group, and Matt has been very diligent in working with the group to try to see if we can't get grant monies for numerous projects, mostly, you know, town projects, but they're also looking to partner with us and some other things. So Matt's diligently working on that. Don and I had a meeting today with ESC. We're looking to move forward with solar and some of the town buildings. We're still gonna wait on the school roofs, because we're gonna wait until the roofs are done before we propose that. But we're proposing them on the town hall, the senior center, company two fires station, more panels on the Parks and Rec building as well. So we're working through that. And they'll be coming to a very close Selectmen's meeting. I'm not sure if it's the next one or the one after, but they'll be coming in and doing a presentation to the Board of Selectmen. And I want to make sure the Green Committee's aware of what we're proposing as well. I think they'll be happy, taking a lot of carbon footprint off the town by doing it. And then I sent out a notice to the Selectmen and the department heads that the Department of Transportation, the DOT, is looking to close Route ninety-four on the north end of town by Foot Farm to repair that covert that washed out. I think the worst-case scenario is they're looking at ninety days, but I believe they're gonna try to get that, worst-case scenario. They don't wanna say sixty and then have it go sixty-five or seventy. But so I've been working with that. I've had communications with Bill Anderson at the golf course. He's very concerned. September's a very big month for him at that business, and he just put a lot of money into the new place out there, the practice range. So we're dealing with the state, trying to keep that one lane as long as possible, and dealing with the contractor that's gonna do that. So they're expected to start working on that after the fair. I was told, we don't know if it's the same date as our meeting, so September nineteenth is when they're looking to start that. So we'll have to stay in contact, and we'll start sending out messages, you know, regarding that, to notify the people as well. And that's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, that's gonna be a nightmare. Okay. Changed my paper. Our next item is the School Resource Officer, the SRO update and proposal.
Yeah, so if you remember from the last meeting, we've got a correspondence from the Hebron Board of Ed, and they were, it was addressed to the Board of Selectmen and myself. They were hoping that we could install a second resource officer by the start of the school year, which at the last meeting, working with Mark and resident trooper Bryce Reed, that's something that's really not achievable, but in the flavor of the request, we came up with some quick fix or some solutions that we can do immediately, and they're here for you to consider. So the School Resource Officer SRO update and proposal would be, the town manager and police department have reviewed the Hebron Board of Education's request for an additional SRO for elementary school and make following recommendations. So one, immediately increase patrol hours with current Hebron police officers to provide more daytime coverage during these shifts visits can be made to the schools. The second, purchase and deploy school slash classroom toolkits, active shooter, breaching kits, and police vehicles using ARPA funds, and the cost is roughly twenty thousand dollars to do that. Three, would also provide active shooter training to school staff, students, and police officers. Four, recommending, plan to include and consider the request for a second SRO for elementary school. That probably should be part of the next year's budget because it's such a big item. And then it would take us, I think the school runs about ten months. It would take us, if we were even to get somebody now, it'd probably take four to six months to get that person even in place, and that still would, we still not have a vehicle for that person. So that's why that recommendation is what it is. And lastly, ask the Board of Selectmen to approve ARPA funds for an additional police vehicle, which is estimated at eighty thousand dollars. So the total request would be a hundred thousand dollars, the eighty thousand for the car and the twenty thousand dollars for the training and the toolkits. So that's what we came up with.
Comments from anyone? I personally think it's reasonable and doable. Peter?
Yeah, I appreciate all the thought, and I think the, you know, one through four make a lot of sense to me. I am not a fan of tying ARPA specifically to a vehicle specifically to the SRO. I think there's clearly an opportunity here to use those funds to think about the vehicle for the police force, because clearly once needed, and if ultimately through the budget process, it comes to bear that the SRO is what we're gonna move forward with, and the police and the town can determine how best to utilize resources, including the vehicle. But I am not comfortable that the vehicle would be specific to utilization of a school resource officer, because I think that's premature, and it also has, would have a tendency, from my perspective, to suggest that it's already been approved, which clearly it has not been, and not been part of the budget. So I don't know if I misunderstood the intent here, but I don't, I think the police cars should be absent of a discussion specifically to the SRO and more in the context of, does the town of Hebron need another car? And from my perspective, we absolutely do, and this is the opportunity to think about ARPA funds for that. So I have a little concern about sort of how it's articulated, specific to the correlation of the car to the officer that has yet to be hired or yet to be approved or incorporated into the budget process.
Please, Andy.
Yeah, great, great question, Peter. So maybe I didn't explain it properly, and it probably does sound like I was specifically making that car for the SRO.
No, it's probably me.
No, you're correct. We would be adding a car to the police department, and that way it would afford us to have a vehicle, whether it be on a patrol or allow an SRO to have a car. Doesn't mean that new one would be specific to that, but it's kind of hard to add another position that's gonna be on during the day without adding another car to the police department. So I don't know if that helps or not.
Well, it does. I think we need a car regardless. I mean, I, we don't have enough, so. So as long as that is clear, I don't want ultimately, hey, you have the car, we already have the vehicle ready to go, so all of a sudden it becomes a, you know, a foregone conclusion that it's already been approved, and I don't want that perception. At least I'm not comfortable with it at this point. So as long, that helps a lot. Thank you.
It makes sense, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna reiterate also, you know, like Andy was saying, this would be an additional police vehicle for the town. Right now, one of the biggest problems is getting vehicles. We're still waiting for a police vehicle that we had ordered, and I'm not even sure how many months ago. The equipment's just not out there. You know, look at the problems we had just getting the roll-off truck, and it's worked out fantastic. But if we hadn't jumped when we did, who knows at what year we actually would have gotten that vehicle. So with resources the way they are, we really need to kind of jump long range down the road to have it for when we actually need it. It's my kind of viewpoint. I don't know if anybody else has anything else they want to add on that. Tiffany?
Dan?
A quick comment? Yes?
Yeah, I think this, Andy, good job coming up with this. I think this is something we could do immediately, and time is always a concern. There's urgency to this. We just need to be ready to respond quickly to help in any event that we're needing in the school. And right now, this is the best way to do it. Really doesn't matter if the person is labeled an SRO or he's a police officer. What matters is fast response, and people know what they, know what they're doing when they get there, and the staff and kids know what they have to do. So once we get all this rolling, we can answer the question that we've looked at this, and we've done the best we could to put ourselves in a situation to respond to this in the best manner that we can. So obviously, you guys know I'm passionate about this, so I'm excited to get all this in place. And hopefully, the Board of Education, even the Board of Education is happy with this, and that they're assured that we're doing our best to make them safe.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
If I might. So I support this proposal. I support it because unfortunately, you know, this is, this is training that's necessary. But I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that, you know, ideally, it would be great to live in a world with better regulation of firearms, where this becomes less of a reality and an actuality that can happen. I know that I've already heard from constituents that the active shooter training can be stressful. It can be an extra stress on top of, you know, trying to educate our children. That being said, I will support this proposal because I think that it meets the needs of the Board of Education right now. But I just thought it was important to say that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I feel the biggest problem we have in this country is the mental health issues and the fact that the country is getting more and more divided. But at this point, we're worrying about the town of Hebron, and this is a good proposal, and it's a good start, and it's something that we can do now. So. At this point, I'm wondering, I think that the next section will address this. So we don't need to move on this right this second, because we're already moving on a number of things coming right up. So if that, if, that's understood. We have before us a list of issues that we've got backup material for. And so hopefully, we can, as we go down through this list, do the resolution that will cover all of these items. So that would be, actually, it's up on the screen, the cyber threat assessment and security measures. I had asked, and I had reviewed it and asked some questions, and I believe Donna stated that she had gotten all the answers to the questions that I had out to everyone. Did anybody have any other questions with this request? This would be for the novice, and this would be the cyber threat assessment and security measures. I don't know, Andy or Donna, did you just want to briefly just touch on what this is for the public that might be listening?
Yeah, let me just jump in and format this a little bit, and then I'll let Donna speak to the actual items. So at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, you know, we were kind of just showing you requests as they came in. We weren't really looking for action on them. So now what we're doing is, we're gonna just bring a couple items that they come in, we feel that are kind of somewhat time-sensitive, that we should start acting on, or start to get you guys to start thinking about them, giving them approvals. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna bring in a few at a time to not try to dominate the whole meeting. So that's why you have a list of five things here. And of course, the cyber threat is the first one. That's something that we've been instructed by our insurance company to try to move forward with. We're also gonna be working with the schools to do this as well. And I guess the theme out there is it's not, it's not when, or it's not if, it's when you're gonna get cyber threats. So we need to step up on that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Donna if there's questions in regards to what that is.
In addition to our insurance company recommending this, these measures, we need to take some of these measures to secure cyber insurance, to protect the town. Our auditors, all our financial auditors also recommend a lot of these measures be taken. And there is a lot of professional IT support involved in this. So Novus will be doing a lot of the work with us and for us. And Novus has worked very closely with the insurance companies to understand what is required, and also on, you know, state and regional levels to understand what is coming. And this changes all the time. They will give us a list of requirements one year, and then we make progress on those. We go to apply for the cyber insurance, and they tell us, no, you know, things have changed. Now you need to do these things. So, and I just wanna, you know, we did include the proposals in this package, and the total you'll see is greater than the twenty-five thousand we're looking for from ARPA. We're using some money that is in our regular operating budget that we had included for cyber insurance, We're using some money that is in our regular operating budget that we had included for cyber insurance, but since we cannot get the cyber insurance yet, we're going to use that money for this purpose. So it's something that we've been trying to do for several years, and this we feel is a good use of the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Pete.
So how much is the cyber insurance? Are you buying it? Are we so we're not self-insured? We're self-insuring now, clearly, because we don't have it. But how much is this? I don't know if that was in there or not. I may have missed that. But how much is the cyber insurance?
The the last estimate that we had from Kirma when we were making the application for cyber insurance a couple of years ago, we had budgeted for the town $25,000. But that premium, and you know how insurance is, Peter, that premium is unpredictable, and we know that it has gone up since that since then.
And I mean, cyber insurance is one of, yes, two years ago, cyber insurance is dramatically more expensive today than it was two years ago. And in some cases, a lot more difficult to to secure. So
Yes.
I'm thinking that I was just curious, because if we do all this work and then find out it's, you know, $200,000 to buy it, then what do we do? We could probably, I just naturally would think, okay, what's now we've done all these requirements, now we're ready to buy it, and it's unaffordable. And not that I'm suggesting that it would be unaffordable, but I'm just curious if 25,000 is 50, are you going to go through all these, are we going through all these exercises? Still, and I, of course, as a risk manager would say, absolutely, you should do that. But I'm just curious because I if it's cost prohibitive, we ought to know that in advance.
I can check with our insurance people and see if they can maybe give us an estimate from another town comparable size that may have attained the cyber insurance this year. I know initially we were looking at 25 for the town and a little bit more for the schools. And then last year, she told us it had gone up, but I don't think we're talking hundreds of thousands. But I'll try to get a little more information.
I don't think 20, if 25 is 50, are we still good with that? I just, you know, I just I'd like to sort of understand what the end is because we have to add that into the budget process. And then obviously, you understand what the exposures are. So I, although I have interest, I won't ask you that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a quick question. And again, I'm, I rub sticks together that make fire. Utilizing their services is still going to make us a harder target? Would that be an accurate statement?
That is completely accurate, even if we do not get cyber insurance for whatever reason. Taking these measures makes us, will make us even more secure. We have taken some measures already. But enacting these measures will make us even more secure all the way around.
Go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, and it's just a matter of if, when we become a target, and then ultimately, the real exposure becomes ransomware where someone in a foreign country just says, hey, we, we're going to charge you $250,000 to get your, to give you your data back or to allow you to get your system. And that's really the big exposure, Dan, is ultimately ransomware. Now, we, no matter what you do, what we do, if someone wanted to hack us, they would and could. It's just that we're not a very, a super attractive target as other entities might be in terms of the ability to garner a ransom from us. But that's ultimately the exposures. But it'll make us a little bit better. But reality is, no matter what, we clearly can be hacked no matter what we do, and it's really buying the insurance can help us protect and support us in the event that we have to negotiate with these cyber terrorists and ultimately consider, you know, paying ransomware and all, and all that sort of things that go that go along with it. And so it does give you a certain degree of peace of mind that we're a little better protected, clearly, but not a ton. That's just reality. That's why it's getting so expensive to buy and why they're going through all these extra efforts to even make it eligible to buy. Because the outcome is generally predetermined. It's just how much of a target we are. And we're not a big target, you know, in the world of of businesses, because, you know, we've got lists, we've got names, we've, I mean, we don't have a huge amount of revenue tied to the data that we have that then would be a huge loss for the town. So it's just a, it's a risk assessment, but it's it's an ugly exposure that you clearly can't avoid. So you have to do some things to protect yourself in the inevitable event that you could be hacked. And then it's really about the aftermath more so than than the protection, although some protection is helpful. That's just from being in the business and selling that coverage. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on item one? Item two, the H I H S food pantry, and I believe that we had had something last month concerning this. And I know there's a letter from Duane Bruner. But I know that they've been trying to do a lot of work on that building themselves, and it is a facility that helped so many people here in Hebron. And I think the amount that they're asking for is very reasonable. Anybody have any questions or comments that someone may be able to answer?
I'll just, go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, so they originally wanted a request to see if we could help them with remodeling of that building. We ran it by the town attorney, and he didn't feel that that was an appropriate use of the ARPA funds. So in talking with the gentleman, I asked him, you know, what would would benefit? And they got a lot of people in need. They've been giving out a lot of food. They, I said, so I recommended, what if we were to give a monetary donation to try to stock your shelves? And he said, yeah, that would be great. So we came up with this request, and that's something that we could probably do right away and try to help them out, which is in turning us out to the people in need in the town of Hebron. So you know, to me, it was a no-brainer. So we put it on here.
Okay.
Dan?
Yes, sir.
I'm 100% supportive of that. I've seen the good work that they've done for years, just like you have, and it's a good idea, Andy, to support them. So you got my vote on that one getting approved.
Okay. The next one is the Wall Street sidewalk project. And Andy, did you want to discuss that?
Yeah, so I can summarize, there is information in your packet about the the updated cost analysis. So originally, this was bid out with the RAM campus improvements, and it was going to be one of the alternatives. We ended up not having enough money to do the alternative with the RAM project. But we did get a bid of like $156,000 to install it at the time. We've now got a Steve Grant, but with the increase in the construction of this project, we had shipper go out there and review it, and there was a significant finding that made us go back and alter the plans. So in doing so, the contractor had finished the project and left. So now you're going to have mobilization costs. Product costs have increased dramatically. Everybody I think that deals with that knows that's going on due to COVID. And then we had to alter the plan, and they came back with about a $500,000 plus price tag for 1,100 feet of sidewalk. I just said, that's not even palatable. I couldn't even suggest that. So we went back to the drawing board with the engineers, and we came up with a smaller scale that we feel we can go out to bid with. That price came in at 380,000, still almost double the original quote if we would have done it when we did the school project, but it is what it is. So with the steep funds and then some monies we have in the CIP accounts, we would still need an additional $146,000 upfront to fund that project. But there is a good chance when we go out to bid, hopefully, the bids will come in lower than that $360,000. But at this time, you have the backup information that shows the the estimate sheet, and we're short about $146,000. So that's why we're suggesting still get a lot of pressure, still get a lot of people asking us to get that sidewalk installed. We updated the prints. We just need some more money.
Comments from anyone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this project, this sidewalk is something that we've been talking about for many, many years. And of course, as you go on, it just gets more and more expensive. So I would just like to see it done. It's needed. It's something we've all approved, and those people have been very patient. You recall how often they came to Board of Selectmen meetings to speak about it. So that's my comments.
Thank you. Tiffany?
I was going to say the exact same thing. Thank you.
And the only thing I was going to add is this was something that we had promised, we had put money aside, we told these people it was going to get done. During the RAM project, there were some holdups that we promised the people, it's not off the radar. We'll get to it. I feel we are obligated to, A, fulfill that commitment, and it is a safety feature of people walking on Route 316. We've had serious accidents on 316s. Route 316, we've had fatalities on 316. And I think this sidewalk is needed. It's a safety issue, and I support it myself also. Anyone else? Okay, the winter heating assistance.
Yes, once again, Mr. Chairman, whatever rationale they had up at the state level, they used ARPA funds in the previous budget, but this year they had not appropriated that. So the request is in response to information received from Sharon Gerard, the Senior Services Director. The winter heating assistance funding will be reduced for the upcoming season. Mrs. Gerard has provided an attached information comparing the 2021 and the 2022 awards. Also attaches information on the number of households and award amounts for last year. The $25,000 amount is an estimate of the reduction in funding, but does not consider the huge increase in the cost of fuel. So I think that's very important, especially with the the cost of fuel that's going on right now, that the people are going to need this assistance more than more than ever. They're getting hit in the pocketbooks from groceries, gasoline, and now heating oil. So I think that would go a long way to try to fund that for our seniors, which is a huge part of our population here in Hebron.
Gail?
Yes, we have about 13537 households in Hebron that depend on this. So this amount of money, as Andy said, it's to make up the money that we will not be receiving, but it does not take into account the increase in costs. And we all know what, if you heat with oil, what oil has done or anything else that you use. So I'm very concerned what is going to happen with these seniors in town. And that number that I quoted was just a number from last year. As you know, the population in town is aging, aging rapidly. So there may be more folks, more households that need aid this year, but we don't know yet. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes, Peter. And I, and I obviously, having seen Sharon's information and asking, asking her to provide more detail, I I don't even know this is enough because obviously, it goes right at the need of our seniors, but there's a lot of working families that I would suggest are going to have a very, very difficult time in general. So the fact that we're doing anything to bolster our ability to support our residents who clearly have documented needs and this year will be stressed probably beyond belief, and this is a direct correlation to COVID, which is in essence, you know, where this ARPA funds, even though, you know, all communities seem to stray a little bit from utilization of the funds in terms of its original intent, this clearly is a direct correlation to the impact of COVID. At least you can make a lucid argument that that's the, that's the case. And obviously, it could be a broader discussion. But I'm a big fan, and, you know, I think we have to be paying close attention, and maybe we even need to do more if the season ends up being as cold as some predict. So I'm a big fan, and thank you for bringing this forward, Andy.
Mark?
Yes, I do agree with Gail and Peter. We're a community, and we're a community more than we are a government. So when people in our community struggle, we need to do everything we can to support them. And this is one of those things we can to support people, just like the food pantry. So I feel very good as a member of this community when we do things like this. So I'm glad this is here and you have my support.
Thank you. I have a question. We keep talking on seniors. Is this also open to others who are below the poverty guidelines, or is this just seniors?
I have to get clarification on that. Donna, do you know that answer? Is this just for seniors? Or is it anybody that needs assistance who can go through the senior center?
I would want to double check with Sharon, but I'm pretty sure that it's anybody who qualifies for the program.
Yeah, I think so.
Any.
That's what I thought.
I think so.
Because I remember years and years ago, there were a couple people who were definitely not senior or not in that senior citizen age bracket who were receiving at least some support from the town you know, on on heating oil assistance. Yeah, so it's a great program, and I definitely am all in favor of it as well. Okay, thank you. And then our last item, and that's why, as I say, rather than trying to make a discussion on for would be the the monetary request to provide the items that will benefit both the town and the school. wording it that way because the additional police vehicle would be for the town, but it would make it available as necessary. So is there any more discussion on that? Yes, Andy.
Yeah, so just just to be transparent and clear, so this is the request, what you saw for the ARPA funds, $80,000 for a police vehicle for the town. And then also $20,000 to buy the equipment and training and stuff for the police and the schools. Just to be clear, the funding, the extra funding for the police officers immediately is because we we don't have that budgeted. I've had conversations with the Finance Director and the Board of Finance. What we're proposing to do is just increase the hours on the part-time payroll that's been approved already. And we're going to run that into the red and then see if we can, by the end of the year, do a transfer. Or if not, we would have to come back and get a supplemental appropriation. So I just want to be sure everybody's aware of how we plan on paying for the extra hours we're proposing now versus the $100,000, which is 80 for the car and 20 for the equipment, training. And if any questions.
Comment.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. So Andy, do you have like a ballpark where how the red's going to look? Is there a range that you sort of are thinking about?
No, I haven't, we haven't, we haven't come to that. You know, we're looking at like maybe adding 20 hours, like another, another, Mark, what do you work a week or normal, or Ricky, a normal police officer works a week? Like under 20 hours, right? So we're looking at another another, another shift.
No. So I think what Andy's saying is what another, another eight hours a week you'd be adding to give them each four or more. So that's what you, that's what you're looking at, Pete. Eight hours a week for 52 weeks. At a certain basic salary, what rate is $30 an hour, if you want to be specific about it all. Does that help, Pete? Does that help, Pete?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mark. So would we be changing the title, or is the title of number four not relevant to our agreement? Because it's really, title number four is additional police vehicle and equipment for active shooter training is what it is, right?
Yeah, on the, on the second page on the list, the Board of Ed requests for a second SRO of a hundred thousand. It's, it's, you're right, that would be. My suggestion for that is we're gonna add that to the following year's budget, because it would take us so long this year to even try to implement that. So what we could do immediately is eighty thousand ARPA funds, eighty for the car, twenty for the additional equipment and training. And then the funding for the remainder of this year, we would take it already out of our part-time payroll, run that into the red that wasn't budgeted. And then at the end of the year, like we normally do, is, is look to see if we have any surpluses to cover that. And then, of course, if we didn't, we would know better what that is. And we might have a supplemental appropriation just due to winter operations or something else, some other unforeseen, much later in the year when a, when a supplemental appropriation is appropriate.
I
Actually, Peter, I misspoke, so it's only for ten months, because you have a ten-month school year. So it would be a little less than, than we thought. So just in thinking, it's two forty times four. You're at under a thousand dollars a month, time ten, ten months. So you're somewhere around eleven thousand dollars. I mean, it could go to, to or through the other way, two grand or whatever the other way or so, right, Andy? But that's a ballpark figure, I would say, based on that estimate, Pete.
Thank you.
I was trying to find the paperwork that had gone down through. And of course, I filed it. Okay, the explanation, I, I just wanted to make sure as we read this resolution, that it is clear that this is not for the SRO individual, that this is for the toolkits. The, the vehicle that would be another town police cruiser. Not, like you had said before, Pete, not necessarily dedicated to an SRO.
So are we able to, are you able to break that down? I'm sorry, Donna, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna say, we'll, we'll delete item number four, and then we'll add two items. One would be additional police vehicle for eighty thousand. And then the other one will be the classroom toolkits, classroom and vehicle toolkits and training, active shooter training.
That would be, that's perfect, thank you. Yes. Okay, so the resolution. Be resolved that the Hebron Board of Select would approve the ARPA projects listed below as amended and authorize Andrew J. Turney, Town Manager, to take any action necessary to acquire or implement the identified projects. Be it further resolved, that it is understood that the amounts are indicated are budget estimates. The amount of the final project may be more or less than indicated, and that the Town Manager has the discretion to adjust the amount. If an individual project budget comes in more than twenty percent above the original budget amount, an update will be provided to the Board of Selected before commitment is made and the project is finalized. Be it further resolved that authorization, authorization is given to Andrew J. Turney, Town Manager, by this resolution includes signing any purchase agreements, contracts, or any other documents necessary to finalize the projects. And those items would be, number one, the cyber threat assessment and security measures for twenty-five thousand. Number two, the H I H S food pantry for ten thousand. Number three, the Wall Street sidewalk project for one hundred and forty-six thousand. Item four would be for a second police cruiser at eighty thousand. Item five, the winter heating assistance for twenty-five thousand. And item six would be the active school shooter toolkits and additional training at twenty thousand. Is that accurate? Yes. Hearing the resolution, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, can I just leave one quick comment? I just wanted to thank, and, and just bring to light the fact that we are very fortunate to have someone like Mark here that can do that training. You know, my background allows me unfortunately to see the, the aftermath of some awful event like an active shooter event, in terms of the type of insurance coverage that, that, you know, that I have experience with. And the fact that there's training, and we have someone with Mark's capability to actually provide the training is, is huge. Our, our world focuses on the two minutes of the event, and, and obviously, obviously, that's tragic. But to be better prepared and to be prepared for the, even for the aftermath, i- i- we can understand the importance of that. So I just wanted to thank Mark. We, we sometimes take for granted the resources that we have, and Mark's a, a great example of, of a resource that we're very blessed to have in this town, and that he can provide a significant benefit with that training. So thank you, Mark. Just wanted to make that comment before we move on, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Hey, guys, I just consulted Peter for hours about how people are held liable for not responding to events like active shooter. And I learned a lot, and it helped me put together the curriculum for training and think about things that we should do and haven't done. So Peter, I'd like to thank you also for giving me a, a different perspective. Because when, when the police are gone, and you're talking about the aftermath, and everybody's looking to see what happened, that's where insurance comes in and is able to pinpoint where people were liable and what they should have done and what they didn't do. So that, that was helpful to me, Peter, and thank you for that, too. Peter's a great person, also.
It's, it's a journey we're on together as a community, and it's an unfortunate one, but nonetheless, one we have to take. So any help we can all provide is, is more than welcome, but thank you for that.
I want to echo that, and, and I'd like to also just say, it's, it's just sad that there are a few out, out there in the public who virtually seem to try to disparage everybody, you know, those people who are really putting their lives on the line for our town. And sometimes some of what I read is very frustrating. But get rid of that. Anyway, thank you. Okay. Think we're moving any other old, no, we have the, no. We're done. I think there's no other new or old business, correct?
Nope.
So moving into new business, Andy?
Okay, so Parks and Rec had taken a hit during COVID in the programs, but now they're back up and running and prep's up and running. They've got quite a bit of activities, so it's time to backfill that position. So here in front of you, item nine A, approve revised, revised job description, Parks and Recreation Office Assistant. The Parks and Recreation Office Assistant position funding was restored in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two budget. And recruitment has begun, the job description has been reviewed and minor changes have been recommended. Please find the recommended revised job description attached along with a motion.
And I did review it, so read the motion, move that the Hebron Board of Select would approve the amended job description for the Parks and Recreation Department Office Assistant as presented. Did anybody have any issues with anything that was in that? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next would be the approval of the conservation easement, Andy?
Yes, so item nine B in the agenda packet is referring to number one fifty-five Reedie Hill Road. So recently, went from planning a zoning, attaches a memo from Town Planner Matthew Bordeaux regarding acceptance of the conservation easement for one fifty-five Reedie Hill Road with a proposed motion.
Okay.
And there's Matt back up there.
Okay, read the motion, open it up for discussion. Move the Hebron Board of Select to accept the conservation easement from Richard Matt Stilat and Elizabeth O'Callaghan to the town of Hebron, shown on a map entitled two lot subdivision plan record subdivision map property of and prepared for Richard Matt Stilat and Elizabeth O'Callaghan, one fifty-five Reedie Hill Road, Hebron, Connecticut. Scale one inch equals forty feet, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Prepared by Dutch and Associates Land Surveyors, which map is on file in the office of the Town Clerk of the Town of Hebron. Does anybody have any questions? The only question I had is it appears as if the easement is along the, the roadside of the property?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Is that normal? Okay. Just, I don't know, I've never seen along the front line like that, but.
Yeah, they recently just appointed a reference to subdivisions along with the new practice facility up there across from Blackledge. Those lots have a similar conservation easement in the front by the road.
Okay, who monitors that?
I'm really trying to not weigh in on my opinion, but I'm gonna have to open it up here. So that is, gives, it gives permission to the Conservation Commission to inspect that. I've had conversations as the Town Manager to our new Town Planner, Matt, having some concerns that if somebody comes forward to the town or planning and zoning with a two lot subdivision, you know, you look at the rest of the houses on the road to see if that's something that's the norm or to continue. In my mind, this was a stretch here down on Reedie Hill, but that's just my opinion. But I think we want to be friendly to development and people that own the property to do what's right. At least out on West Street that I referred to, down the other end of the road by hookers, there was already some conservation easements. That's a buffer down there, so it wasn't such a far stretch to request that on West Street, I didn't think. I thought it was still, you know, the way it's written is kind of tight for when the people own it and what they can do with it. Says you can't blow leaves in it, you can't cut certain caliber trees out of that. So it's gonna be kind of hard to enforce, but talking to the planner, we're gonna try to do better moving forward, and this is part of the condition of approval for this, so that's why it's in front of you today.
Okay, well, hearing, hearing the motion, any discussion or any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
You, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Our next item would be the Hebron Harvest Fair Permit Fee Waiver Request. Andy?
Yeah, so this is something that comes in front of the Board of Selectment as part of the waiver of fees that has to be done by the Selectment. This is part of the Charter, Chapter two hundred. So I think most of the people are familiar with what the Hebron Lions Club does. They donate a lot of their, their funds to different entities, town departments, the fire department, the library, the senior center, H I H S, A H M. So yearly, they come forward to see if they can waive the building inspection fees. And it's something that we've, or the boards in, in place at that time would do. So they've sent a letter again requesting the same thing, and I think there's some backup information from the building official in regards to that. I think that it's, it's in tune with about eight hundred, eight hundred dollars. Is it spelled out there?
No, but it, there is a letter from, from Randy. Okay, I'll read the resolution. Be resolved by the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the Hebron Lions Club request for waiver of the permit fees associated with the two thousand twenty-two Hebron Harvest Fair in accordance with the Hebron Town Code, Chapter two hundred, fees, Section two hundred dash two waiver of fees. Any discussion on the resolution? Gail?
No, I think that we benefit so much from the money they donate. Particularly, of course, know how they benefit the library and the senior centers. So I have, I very much am in favor of this motion.
The other thing I would like to add is that they have shown to be incredibly good neighbors. Over the years, they've allowed the town, you know, due to our own space needs down at Public Works to, to store vehicles up there. You know, they've done a lot of other things that people don't see, you know, publicly to help the town. So I think this is a, a great thing that we can do for this organization. And, you know, literally, the exposure that it gives our town, one of the biggest fairs in the state, puts us on the map. So no other comments in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Motion or resolution passes. Our next thing would be the draft agenda for the September fifteen, two thousand twenty-two meeting. And as always, any, anything changes, whatever, just get into our town staff. See if there are anything. We can take, I believe, eight B off. And eight C?
Yes, and we'll be adding a couple of grant applications. One for Town Clerk Historic Preservation, and one for the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant.
Okay, great. So again, that's that. Our next would be any other new business? Do we have any? Hearing none. Our next would be the consent agenda items, and we have the tax refunds as listed. And then we have the minutes of the August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. So Gail, did you have anything on the?
Though, I was going to ask you to put that on to the next agenda, because we received those minutes. I didn't have time to. I didn't have time to read them.
Okay, and I read them and I already have changes. So.
You do?
Yeah. Wow, I know. I can read. Okay, so unless anybody has an issue, um, we will hold off on those minutes until our next meeting. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, so then it would just be the tax refunds as listed. So all in favor signify by saying aye. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Uh, Gail?
Gail Witsman, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, our next would be our legislation reports. I don't care. Tiffany, go across the board.
Um, I don't have anything to report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Gail?
Uh, yes, the Douglas Library, uh, tonight was chess night, um, from four thirty to seven thirty. Tomorrow is going to be movie at one o'clock, The Gray Man. Monday, the library will be closed. And the teen game club will be on Tuesday from, um, two thirty to three thirty. And the Board of Trustees for the library will be meeting Monday, September twelfth. The senior center, we were talking about the energy assistance program. That is going to be taking applications, um, for that. Always call the senior center for information on these things, two two eight, one, seven, zero, zero. The A H M chores program had been suspended during, for COVID for two years. And that is, um, open again. And that is supported by the North Central Association on Aging. And, um, but now they're going to be doing outdoor yard work projects. So you would have to call any seniors who need that should call A H M at two two eight, nine, four, eight, eight. And the Board of Ed had an excellent first day. And the board was very appreciative of having offices at each building. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, Peter?
I know it was exciting. I was jogging down the street this morning and this little tyke had his backpack on and he, and I didn't know him. He was in the neighborhood with his dad waiting for the bus. And he shouts out, it's my second day of school today. So, uh, and, and he was also going camping this weekend. But, um, so excited and reminded me of, of sometimes you have to pause and, and sort of reflect on the pure joy of that, that our young people can bring. We spend most of our time talking about things that are more serious, but the pure joy of going back to a great school system like we have was a nice reminder. I couldn't run any faster, but it still made me smile for the next little bit. So it was a reminder of what an exciting time it is for our our young people. So, uh, great job, uh, with all the support that we get there and obviously the Board of Ed and the work they do. So the, uh, just a quick on the, um, uh, Board of Finance meeting, tax collection and back tax collection, all that on track. Um, they did, um, uh, talk a little bit about the SRO request. Uh, you know, we've covered that quite a bit tonight. The, um, uh, there was a discussion on the Board of Ed's request for the, uh, getting, um, some funding added to the non-lapsing fund. But, um, they needed some, uh, more, uh, information from the auditors to make sure that was in alignment relative to the budget. Those are the things that I had on that. And then the, um, and I, I, I can't see if Diane's on the line still. Looks over my phone, but if she, if I missed something, by all means, please, uh, raise your hand. The Parks and Rec Commission, uh, yeah, absolutely. As Andy's saying, they're very excited about sort of the, the uptick in, in, um, in the program activity, the prep activity, all that. So as Andy said, a lot of great news coming back out of the Parks and Rec folks to reflect, um, people jumping back into the programs, the prep, doing what it's doing. Obviously bringing revenue back, but also community engagement across a myriad of items. So very encouraged there. And obviously the additional, uh, support is clearly needed. So that was, uh, very good to hear. And things that we expect, uh, continue, trunk retreat, the ghost run. There's, uh, for those like Mark that might be interested in new yoga classes, brother, you know, new yoga classes. There's a lot of great things happening over at Parks and Rec. Uh, so the discussion continues on the dog park and the location. There's still some, there's some challenges there with trying to find the right, uh, locations, uh, based on open space and the grant requirements and things like that. So still some work being done there. ARPA fund discussions, uh, ongoing as a lot of folks are trying to determine what might be an opportunity to request, uh, funding, uh, from the town for that, sort of that round two discussion. So they could spend some time a little bit on that. More to follow. There was some discussion on, um, A H M and putting out some signage, uh, that it was not a, um, a big issue, but reminded me of, of something that we talked about in the past in terms of putting out some smoke free or no smoking signs, something like that. And maybe something for a future date. I know why in the past we didn't, but I think as a community, uh, coming up, because there isn't one in ordinance uh, around, uh, non-smoking in our, in our public trails and parks and things like that would be something that I would like to discuss at, at a future date. I think that's overdue. Uh, so that's a reminder there that I, I like to bring that up maybe at a future time for discussion. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mark?
Nothing to report, Dan?
Okay, and the other thing I have is the Fire Department Corporation just approved a new set of bylaws. So we'll see where that all goes. And that's all I have. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment if there's any.
There was one public comment earlier in the meeting, um, when you were talking about adding hours to the police officer. It's Terry McManus. And he just had a comment. He said, planning on overrunning a budget item and hope to be able to pay for it, question mark.
Okay.
The mayor. Andy, I appreciate you explaining, uh, the process. And I actually worded the question poorly, although it's, it's, it's an accurate statement, I think of what I heard. What I wasn't.
I, I can respond to that if you, if you would like.
No, no, actually, uh, and things crystallized pretty quickly. What I was really wanting to ask now, we're putting in place a process to purchase the use of a hundred thousand dollars for equipment. And I was a little bit confused about that because when I attended the finance committee, uh, meeting last week, I wasn't really getting the feel that an extra SRO was the, the direction we were going to go. From what I'm getting from this meeting, and this is what the question should have been, Andy, is have we decided that we're going to go with an SRO in next year's budget and try and get through? Because it appears as if the purchase of the equipment now, plus the additional man hours, which you're gonna budget and it's, that's the way to do things. But essentially what clicked in my mind is that we're gonna go ahead with an additional SRU. And I guess that's what the real question is.
Yeah, so maybe I wasn't clear. The great question is, Terry, and I always appreciate you taking the time to inform yourself at both Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen's meetings. So my response to that would be is we're gonna, we have a request from the Board of Ed that it feels important that they, uh, they, they ask for this service. So I think it, because we can't supply it immediately, I think we would have acted on it, whether we approved it or not approved it. What I'm proposing is we put it in the request for next year's budget to see if it makes it. But probably like Peter's question was a good one. What's not clear is even if we do approve that or don't approve it, we still need the, uh, the vehicle for the existing police department. It would, it would replace older vehicles that aren't up to snuff. We need cameras and computers and, and radios. And we have to have, you know, uh, certain, certain things that you have to have to do the job. So we, we need the vehicle anyways, whether we support that position or not. And then the, the funding of the extra hours, that's a normal budgeting.
Right.
Fact.
But, uh, it's a, a serious commitment, uh, at this point in time, but I agree with it. That was just the initial question.
Yeah, we'll leave that up to the, 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 we'll put it in the budget and see how it makes it. Or I'll get another request on the Board of Ed and, and we'll see how that shakes out through the budget process. And then the people can, you know, ultimately vote on it.
Actually, as a concerned citizen or a citizen, uh, worried about if we set the precedent, the town has already decided on a second SRU this year, we may be actually cementing it in place before a vote, so to speak. That, that, that is a concern of mine. But anyways, I appreciate the clarification. Dan, I hope, hope you don't think this was, uh, uh, slight on anything or anybody. It's just a question.
Oh, no, no. And these are all good questions. And these are, you know, all things that, you know, we, we had discussed literally, uh, you know, the vehicle is something that's needed. And, you know, again, the problem is getting this stuff. It's, it's just not available. Years ago, you go to a car shop, you know, auto place, I want a car. You know, what color? Where do you want it? We'll have it next, you know, next tomorrow. It'll be all, you know, cleaned. It's not that way anymore. So you really have to think long, long ahead, uh, to try to do any kind of, you know, planning. So thank you for your interest.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I, Terry, you're right on, because that's what I was trying to get at, which is exactly your concern, which is I support the, the additional vehicle because we need the additional vehicle, period. And then if there is a budgetary, uh, approval of, of that and, and we, the SRO, and would we be then in a position to, to support that? Yes, but regardless, um, it is uh, something that we need independent of, of the SRO request. And that was what I was getting at too, because if not, you're right. It looks like we've already tacitly approved it. And, and then it sort of circumvents the budget process. So I think that's a great question and insight. And I was, that's what I was trying to get. And again, maybe I wasn't clear as to what I was trying to get at there. But I think you make a very astute observation. And, and like Andy said, I really appreciate the fact that you, you jump in and think about this and you've been doing it for years and, and you always make meetings better because of your thoughtful, uh, questions. So thank you.
Thank you, now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none? Motion for adjournment? Gail?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn at nine oh four P M.